Okay, good evening, everyone. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood, is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrieleno Tongva in Gabrieleno Kich peoples. It is 6:33. It is Thursday, August 21st, 2025. This is a meeting of the West Hollywood Planning Commission, and I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Gilli, could we have a roll call, please? Ah, Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite people to stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Tonight, Commissioner Lombardi is absent, so the roll call votes will reflect his absence on the votes. Commissioner Solomon.
Here.
Commissioner Hoopengarner.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Carvalho.
Here.
Vice Chair Jones.
Here.
Chair Gregoire.
Here.
And we have a six-member quorum tonight.
Terrific, thank you so much. Approval of the agenda. Before someone moves to approve the agenda, I'll note we have one consent calendar item tonight, item 8A. If any commissioner wanted to discuss that matter, they could ask to have it pulled to excluded consent. If not, it would be approved as part of approving the agenda. However, when we get to that item, I've been told that staff will want us to do a vote to receive and file. With that...
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Hoopengarner moved. Vice Chair Jones seconded. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Let's go to a vote.
And the motion carries, noting six I's and Commissioner Lombardi absent, approving the agenda as presented for August 21st, 2025.
One thing I forgot to mention, if any one of the public wanted to speak to the consent calendar item, they're free to do so in public comment. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have draft minutes from August 7th, 2025. Do any commissioners have any changes to propose? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Hoopengarner, seconded by Commissioner Carvalho. Could we have a vote, please?
And the motion passes with six I's, noting Commissioner Lombardi absent, approving the minutes for August 7th, 2025, as presented.
Great. Public comment. This time, limited to a maximum of 20 minutes, has been set aside for the public to address the Planning Commission on any item that is not set for public hearing or any item that's not on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Brown Act, public comment relating to business not appearing on the agenda cannot be acted upon or discussed by the Commission during the meeting, but may be referred to staff for report on future agenda, ordered, received, and filed, or referred to the proper department for administrative resolution. Staff requests that all persons wishing to address the Commission fill out a speaker slip and give it to the Commission's secretary prior to speaking. The Commission recuts that when you begin speaking, please state your name and the name of the city where you reside. Individuals may address the Commission for up to three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
We have no one on Zoom, and I have no one here in chambers for this public comment. I do have public comments for the last one at the end of the meeting.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Chair, it looks like we have someone that wants to speak, but just to note, you have to come to the dais to present.
Terrific. Please come forward. Make sure you've filled out a speaker slip and state your name and city of residence.
What up, councilman? My name is Chad Kroger. I currently reside in Culver City. Also, forgive the unruly hair I was shredding earlier. So, we brought a friend here who's going to speak for a group that is never spoken for. Josh is the coolest virgin we know. We want him to champion virgin rights. No mental calculus here, just straight policy. What up?
Yeah, we also wanted to take this opportunity to somewhat admonish the...
I'm sorry, your name and city of residence?
Oh, JT Parr, Burbank. To admonish LA City proper for voting down SB 79, which would have added affordable housing near a major transit stops. Los Angeles leadership does a good job of paying lip service to the cost of living and homeless situation in Los Angeles, but every time it comes down to putting their money where their mouth is, they uphold the status quo. And I, for one, am a saddened citizen by this result. But that is neither here nor there. Our buddy Josh, he's a virgin, is going to rip it right now.
My name is Joshua Snyder, and I would like to start by thanking you all for your time and attention. Speaking as someone, for lack of a better term, who is a virgin, I would like to suggest that we celebrate virgins instead of shame them. And that's why I'm going to throw out that we should have a National Virgin Day. I find I tend to get the most depressed in November, around Thanksgiving. That's when I think we should kind of throw that out there. It's like middle of November, maybe, maybe the 11th or the 12th. And I think that if we do that and we celebrate virgins a bit more than shame them, I think it would make the world a better place. And I'm not going to take up too much more of your time. The last thing I want to say is I again want to thank you for your time and attention. And yeah, a lot of this is for the sake of comedy, but I want to celebrate the fact that we live in a society where we have the ability to do this and celebrate the fact that this is even possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, that is our last public speakers. And they actually did sign up, but it was inadvertently put on the last public hearing for the agenda, so. We have their names on record.
Thank you for the public comment. The next item is the Director's Report.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Francisco Contreras, Long Range Planning Manager, Acting Director, until our Director returns on Monday. But at last Monday's City Council meeting, the council received an informational update on the zoning improvement program, the ZIP program. This initiative is a central part of implementing the sixth-cycle housing element and is designed to modernize zoning regulations in ways that support affordability, equity, and increase housing production throughout the city. And you've seen it before you here at the Planning Commission. The update just highlighted the results of Phase 1 outreach efforts so far and outlined key milestones ahead. So to keep the community informed, we're inviting the public to visit the project website, which now features up-to-date information and on upcoming focus groups as well as upcoming community meetings, as well as a new published FAQ document. So that resource addresses recurring themes that we've been hearing from the community and also helps clarify some common points of misinformation regarding the program. The council also discussed the proposed... Well, we're going to discuss the proposed ZTA to expand noticing requirements for project-seeking development agreements. They did table that item to the October 6th City Council meeting to come back as an unfinished business for further discussion. So that will be heard October 6th at the City Council meeting. In addition, the City Council received a quarterly update on the major commercial and mixed-use development projects in the city. A particular focus was on delayed or incomplete projects, including the Melrose Triangle project. The council emphasized the importance of developing a more proactive strategy to address stalled developments, which may include considering policies that limit future agreements with nonperforming developers. So that was sort of something that the City Council wants to explore a little bit further. And so we'll see that further ahead in other agendas. Looking ahead, we'd also like to encourage community members to remain engaged with the Fountain Avenue Streetscape project. The next opportunity for input will be at the Public Facilities Recreation and Infrastructure Commission meeting, which is happening next week, Tuesday, August 26th, at 6:30 PM at Plummer Park, Rooms 5 and 6. Typically, that meeting is at City Hall, but this is being moved to Plummer Park, Rooms 5 and 6, for the special meeting. And then finally, on a lighter note, Director Marisic will be returning to the office in just a couple of weeks. So he will be joining us for the next Planning Commission meeting. So we look forward to welcoming him back, and we hope that he's happy to see all of us when he returns. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Contreras from Commissioners? Thank you so much. Okay, we're now at the consent calendar item. Staff has requested that someone make a motion to receive and file. Staff, report.
I'll move.
Vice Chair made the motion. Commissioner Carvalho seconded. Any further discussion? Let's go to a vote.
And the motion is approved by six I's, approving the consent calendar for the receiving file for 11:30, North La Brea Avenue, noting Commissioner Lombardi absent on this vote.
Thank you so much. We don't have any public hearings for projects subject to the Housing Accountability Act tonight, but we have one item requiring a public hearing involving a subdivision for 545 to 547 North Sweetsir Avenue. Could we have a staff report?
Absolutely. Please provide me a moment to set up the screen. Okay, good evening, Commissioners and Chair Gregoire. My name is Roger Rath. I am an associate planner with the current and historic preservation planning team. And today, I will be presenting a request for a common interest development conversion, also known as a condo conversion. No construction is proposed as part of this request. The subdivision would allow the airspace of each unit to be converted and sold into individual units. The proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA guidelines per Section 15301 existing facilities. So the subject property is zoned R3B, which means that it's a residential multifamily medium-density property. The subject site is approximately 11,000 square feet, which was previously developed with two one-story, single-family houses on separate lots. On September 1st, 2016, the Planning Commission approved the demolition of the existing buildings to construct a three-story, nine-unit residential development with 20 subterranean parking spaces. The development is comprised of all two-bedroom units with an average unit size of approximately 1,300 square feet and are all market-rate units as the applicant elected to pay the in lieu affordable housing fee into the city's housing trust fund. So the development was recently completed on April 15th, 2025. However, the project has remained vacant since its completion. If the property obtains tenants before it is subdivided, the property owner must be required to comply with additional state and local requirements for the conversion of rental property, including the Ellis Act. This condition and safeguards are outlined in Chapter 17.52 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code and also reflected in our Condition of Approvals as Condition 1.6. The applicant has stated that there is no current... I'm sorry. Next slide. Staff was able to meet all required findings and is recommending the approval of the proposed subdivision of an existing nine-unit multifamily residential building located at 545 to 547 Sweetsir Avenue as condition in Draft Resolution Number PC 25-1615. I am available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here too to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before we get to questions, do we have any disclosures of public conversations from the Commissioners? Hearing none. Any questions for staff? Terrific. Do we have an applicant that's wanting to make a presentation tonight?
Oh, yes. That seems to be a type of graphical error. It is 545 to 547 Sweetsir Avenue. Thank you for catching that.
Applicant is not interested in making a presentation? No problem. Do we have any public comments on this matter?
Chair, we have no one on Zoom, and we have no one signed up to speak in chambers.
Okay, terrific. I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to Commissioner Deliberation. Does anyone want to make any comments or discuss this particular matter? Hearing none. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
A motion by Commissioner Hoopengarner, a second by Commissioner Solomon. Any further discussion? If not, let's go to the vote.
And the motion passes with six I's, noting Commissioner Lombardi absent. We do have an appeal process for this item. The Resolution Number PC 25-1615 for the Planning Commission just approved for the property located at 545 to 547 North Sweetsir Avenue, memorializes the Commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the City Council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the City Clerk's Office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The City Clerk's Office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees. The appeal deadline has been extended by one day due to the holiday on September 1st. The appeal deadline will be Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to new business. Planning Commission Subcommittee Appointments. So for the public, we have... The Planning Commission has three subcommittees. We have the Long Range Planning Project Subcommittee, the Design Review Subcommittee, and the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee. And I am prepared to make appointments for the 2024, 2025, 2026 term. For Long Range Planning Project Subcommittee, I am appointing Andrew Solomon, Jesse Harris, and myself, David Gregoire. I will ask Andrew Solomon to please chair that Subcommittee. For Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee, I'm appointing Stacy Jones, Lynn Hoopengarner, and myself, David Gregoire. And I'm going to ask Stacy Jones to chair that Subcommittee. Design Review, I'm going to appoint Lynn Hoopengarner, Rogério Carvalho, and Stacy Jones. And I'm going to ask Lynn Hoopengarner to please chair that Subcommittee.
Thank you. Noted. Staff has got this approved, and these are all for terms commencing now through June 30th of 2026.
And I just want to like thank you all in advance for your service on subcommittees. You know, we all have professional and personal lives, and you know, service on the subcommittees is an extra time commitment. I appreciate all that you do and all that you will do over the coming 12 months. Moving on, we don't have any unfinished business, no excluded consent calendar items. Do we have items from staff, a planning manager's update?
Yes. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. So the updates I have are related to look-ahead schedule for the Planning Commission and for subcommittees. For Planning Commissions, the next meeting is going to be on September 4th. Currently, we have three items scheduled for that meeting. All three are zone text amendments. So our Long Range Planning Division will be presenting all three items. The first zone text amendment is related to specialized housing such as emergency shelters, et cetera. The second one is commercial to residential conversions, text amendment. And then the third one is an update to the ADU ordinance based on requirements and changes from the state. After that, the next Planning Commission meeting is September 18th. We have three items for that Planning Commission hearing. The first one is a conditional use permit for a restaurant at 9255 Sunset Boulevard. The next one is, again, another subdivision, which is basically the one you heard today, conversion of apartments into condominiums. And the third item on September 18th is staff will be presenting SEQA analysis for changes and updates to billboard policy. Those are some minor updates to the policy, as I understand. The October 2nd meeting is canceled for Planning Commission, and then October 16th, we currently have a text amendment again listed for streamlining qualifying housing projects. For the Design Review Subcommittees, we don't have any items as of today for any, the remaining dates for this calendar year. Same with Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee. And Long Range Subcommittee also, we do not have any items at this time for future meetings. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Just wanted to note that I am out of town on September 18th for a work retreat.
Anything else? Thank you so much. Public comment. Do we have any additional public comment?
Chair, we have nothing, no one on Zoom, and I received no public comments here in chambers.
Items from Commissioners.
I'll throw something in there. Commissioner Harris, for the record, I just want to thank everybody on Commission and thank staff. I had a fairly uneventful first meeting, which is good, and... I had a fairly uneventful first meeting, which is good, and I think I'm getting accustomed to the new commission, the new role, and how sensitive these microphones are compared to transportation commission. So, thank you.
Anything else from commissioners? Hearing none. The planning commission will adjourn to our regularly scheduled meeting next to be held on Thursday, September 4th, 2025, beginning at 6:30 PM here at West Hollywood Park Public Meeting Room, Council Chambers. With that, have a good night, everyone.